Thanks for coming. I'm Marty Mclemore. I'm the former town administrator in Boilston. Recently retired. And I've been asked to kind of facilitate or moderate this little meeting. Couple of housekeeping things, obviously. Exit's here. And some ladies room over near the front door. If you need it. We have the room from nine to one. I can't see them taking until one o'clock. And I know that several people have to leave prior to that.
Just before I mention that it's being televised.
Yeah. Yeah, it's being televised, so be aware that you're going to be recorded. There's a lot of stuff happening in Burling right now, as you all know. A lot of development. You know, with another second hotel and possibly a third hotel. A couple hundred units of apartment buildings and so forth. New town administrator coming on with six or seven months. A lot of different things going on. And I applaud the department heads frankly for wanting to get ahead of all that stuff and try to figure out, alright, what are we going to do when all this stuff happens? And how are we going to operate? And how are the departments going to be shaped? And what's it going to be? My role today, as I said, is just to facilitate the meeting, make sure that we don't get into personalities, make sure we don't get into job performance issues or any of those kinds of things, just strictly, you know, keep on track, make sure nobody's getting too angry at whatever somebody says. I will say that I, in my experience, I can't imagine that the Board of Selectmen will make any kind of decisions this morning. It's more of a hearing. You know, tell them what you're thinking, tell them what you're suggesting, and then let them absorb it, and at some point in the future say, this is what we think we're going to do. I guess with all of that said, I don't know if anybody wants to, wants to speak first, you know, kind of a statement type of thing, or whatever you want to do. Otherwise, we can just get into the, to the level that Paul said, Chair.
Well, I think, I guess I'll open my big mouth because it's useful. We just want to make things better. We know that there's been some communications issues within the town. See, it's gotten better over the, over the three years that I've been here. Communications has gotten better, but we're missing in some areas. And we want to make sure that as we advertise for a new town administrator, that we look good for somebody who wants to come here, and then once they get here, they can see that we got things pretty well organized, and they're ready to hit the ground running. So that was kind of the thoughts that we, as department heads, when we were talking about this, had was we just, we want to make things better. We want to streamline communications, whether it be budgets, or capital, or our finances, whatever it was. The interactions with the liaisons and the, and the department heads, and making sure that those communications are transmitted to all the selectmen, so they have all of the same information. So again, it's just, there's some breakdowns in our communication system that we're trying to hopefully fix.
I think I'll, I'll try to shut up because this is for me. But I think a lot of the issues, at least as I read them, when you get a town administrator, a lot of that stuff is just going to automatically take care of itself. Town administrators typically, at least in my experience, will be at every selectmen meeting. They'll do a report at the beginning of the meeting, notify the selectmen of everything that's happening in town. And that goes to the department heads as well as all the different departments. What we did do in Boilston was at every meeting, not every meeting, but once a month, department heads would be there. Typically, it was the highway superintendent, the police chief, the fire chief, the building inspector would all make a report to the Board of Selectmen. The first half hour of every meeting was designated for department head reports, and they'd have seven, eight, 10 minutes each to talk about everything going on in their department, where the money's going, what they're doing, what they've been working on, what they see ahead, all of that stuff. So that there was, you know, always communication with, with the Board of Selectmen and department heads.
How often were your board meetings?
Every other, and then in, in the summer, June, July, and August, it was once a month. Were there days that, that, you know, I as a town administrator would say, I really need to get them together? And we did, we met. Not often, but every now and then on a Friday morning at nine o'clock, we'd have a meeting if there was an issue that really needed to be addressed prior to the scheduled next There were times when we didn't even need, every other week. I think you'll find, and the selectmen will find, that a lot of the day-to-day things that they're probably dealing with now at their meetings are going to be resolved. The town administrator is just going to take care of it. He or she is going to know what the, what the board wants, what they're looking for. And as things come up, he, he or she is just going to take care of it and then report to them when they meet again. So I think, I think the board and the department heads are all going to be pleasantly surprised at what a town administrator is going to bring to the, to the meetings of the departments. It's your meeting.
Do you want to go down the list of items?
And again, this was just a draft.
Oh, I know.
And again, it wasn't, it was just notes that we had taken and talking about. So again, we didn't want to, in any shape or form or fashion, say that we're telling the selectmen what to do. We're just trying to come up with some solutions to some of the issues that we saw, so that we could move forward together.
So. Could you, as everybody's speaking, could you please identify yourself for my benefit? Because I know some of you, but I don't know everybody. Well, the first item talks about liaisons with departments. And as I understand it, currently the setup is that each of the members of the board has a number of departments that they are the liaison with that department. So they'll get information that is then relayed to the board at, when they meet. I guess the question here is, you know, do you need to continue that? Should that be eliminated? I don't know.
I guess so. Tom, go. Chief. I guess, I guess that's one of the things. And I think we've had discussions with, you know, members of the board individually.
By the way, Chief, you're banning the recording.
I saw. I know. I'm not even a detective when I figure it out. That the, the information isn't necessarily always getting back in the right fashion, or coming from the board in the right fashion. You know, when you talk to the different department heads, there seems to be different information that gets passed along. So I don't know if we, it's really not effective. And I think, you know, you and I have had some conversations about that. We've had conversations about it. Is it something that maybe as department heads, we give a monthly report instead? You guys see that report and then say, hey, we need you in front of the board to explain some things. We need to explain some things to you and, and move from there. Because I think it causes a lot of friction between everybody when people think the message has gotten back, or that the message has been delivered, and it hasn't. I don't know. It's hard, because there's a lot of boards, there's a lot of committees, you know, and it obviously is going to put you guys out pretty thin, spread you pretty thin, if you try, if you have to be at a meeting every single night. And having been at the town hall a lot the last few weeks, you guys are at town hall a lot. And does it, does it end up being effective? Because you can't spend an hour at a selectmen's meeting talking about what everyone has seen at every individual board meeting or committee meeting. And then, so I don't know. Just kind of my two cents. But I, I think it's caused, I think it causes friction on the board, and I think it causes friction with, between the board and, and department heads and committees, that there's really not this perfect flow of information. Not that it'll ever be, but.
The more communication, the better, though.
Absolutely. And I think if it's more direct, so that if you see, here's, here's a one-page or two-page report from the police department this month, okay. You know, because it's hard. Every conversation Lisa and I have, obviously isn't getting back, because it can't. It's, you know, it's, but if you now have, this is, alright, this is what they're doing. Alright, now we know what they're doing. Why'd they do that? Get him in here next week and, and explain to what, explain to us what happened. I think that could make things better. Just my two cents.
And I think a lot of that goes away when, when, as you said.
Right.
Boilston, once a month, the department heads came to the meeting. And they, they did that. They read through a report. If the selectmen had any questions, they're sitting right there to be asked. And, and, you know, the chief, both chief, fire chief, police chief, and everybody who came. They had to have their stuff ready, and they had to know, because the board will ask. And if they're right there, they're going to ask questions that aren't even on their report. They may ask about something that they know is happening in a certain area, and they'll get it right from the, the chief, exactly what they're doing. One of the good things about Boilston was that the fire chief lived in town. The police chief lives in Bolton, which is right down the road, not a fire ride. We were open on Monday evenings, which is when the Board of Selectmen met, so that the treasurer, the accountant, everybody was there on, on Monday nights anyways. And the building inspector lived in Clinton, so it was, it was pretty easy. You know, they didn't have a, a long commute to get to the meeting. And like I say, six, seven minutes, each one of them is done. So the first half hour is strictly reports from all of the departments.
I, I think that sounds like a good idea.
We did, we did, you know, Mary will remember, we did some reports for a while from police and fire. But to be honest with you, well, where do you do them? I don't think the board ever ran them. I never had a single question. How could there never be a question?
Is that good?
I'm not perfect. You know, so, so it's like.
So that was, was that when you just gave it to us by email?
We would turn in like a monthly report, and it would get emailed in.
But if you came to a meeting?
Came to a meeting and had to present that report.
Yes. Then there may be more questions.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, I think what happens is then the citizens.
Get to hear.
See the report, or hear the report.
And that makes it more transparent.
Yeah. And, and then the board, what I'm saying, but the board feels obligated then to kind of ask.
Yeah.
What's going on with this? Because someone may have asked one of the board members. So now they're going, oh yeah, someone did ask this, I'm going to bring it up now.
You know, so.
And that's a big part of it, I think, the transparency for the public. I mean, we have to remember that we do all of our business at a meeting.
Right. Right. What about putting the reports online?
I think the other thing, too, is, and it's difficult, and it's unfair to you, you as, as the board, is that you're being asked quite a bit of run of town, and that's, that's a lot on your shoulders. And without you guys being able to meet, all of the time to make a decision, I think, and this goes back to liaisons, we, we're going to each one of our liaisons looking for that feedback as a, as a day-to-day answer. Because we're kind of in a situation where we need an answer. Who do we go to for direction? And I think once we get the town administrator, that's going to solve a lot of those problems, because we'll have that person to talk to on a day-to-day basis. But when we have to wait for a board meeting, it makes things extremely difficult. And it's difficult to communicate to the three of you all in one shot, and you can't make a decision unless you're in front of a camera. So it's just, it's, it's almost like a vicious cycle that goes around and around.
And if a problem arises on a Tuesday, there's six days for it to fester. And that's hard.
Yeah. And again, I don't think it's fair to the board that that all has to happen. So I'm really looking forward to a town administrator coming in, and somebody that we can use as a point person. And then.
I think those reports would be a great idea out there. And someone said, about posting them online. Well, if they're at the meeting, and the meeting is recorded, it's there.
It has to be in part of the meeting minutes.
Right.
Right.
You know, so it's, it's going to be, the other thing is, you know, the chief mentioned something happens on a Tuesday. Well, if it happens the day after your posting requirement for the meeting, now you've got to wait till the following meeting, which is a week and a half later. Because it's not going to be on the posting. And if it's not on the posting, the board cannot deliberate if it's not, if it's not on the agenda. Go ahead.
That, that's not practice here.
Excuse me?
That's not been practice here.
It should be.
The agenda has had late adds all the way up until meeting time.
Okay. Which I think is off for us. Can I check? Anything, anything that's not on the agenda cannot be deliberated on by the Board of Selectmen.
Right.
So they can hear it at their meeting, but they can't deliberate and vote on it until the following meeting when it's on the agenda. And that's a 48-hour notice. I think the meeting is 48 hours. The agenda is 48 hours.
I mean, if it was just a meeting with 48 hours, yeah, you just put that we have a meeting, and then nothing under.
No, you, I spoke to one of the AAGs about this, specifically for our committee, and had those kind of questions. Their intent is for us to post everything that we can think of on the agenda when we can. But if we have to squeeze something else in on the agenda, and it's not posted 48 hours or any time in advance, that's permissive. That's my understanding.
Who'd that come from?
The AAG. Best vote.
How many years were you a town administrator?
I was town administrator for seven years, and assistant town manager, and Stoughton for two years.
So you probably know these roles pretty well?
Yeah, we never posed, we never addressed anything. More like when in Boilston or Stoughton, would not address any issue that had not been posted on an agenda at least 48 hours prior to the meeting. If it came up, they would, they would just, you know, they'd let someone talk about it. But they wouldn't vote on it. There's no decision until the following meeting. And even, that, that even goes for public comments. If someone came, if you have a public comment section in your, in your agenda, and someone came in with an issue, the board could not deliberate on that issue. They would listen to them, take it under advisement, and then make a decision at the upcoming meeting.
That's a good, I mean, it's a good practice, because it is transparent.
But, but how did you handle, or, you know, if you have a town manager or a town administrator in place that can make, has some executive authority to make decisions, how do you handle emergencies? How do you handle emergencies? You know, something blows up, and we don't have the money to spend it, and Dave's got to buy all new boilers, or else the building's going to freeze.
When we were on, when we were on school committee, the superintendent would call individual members. And I don't know whether, how it worked for you, Marty, but then she, she or he or she would have an idea of, you know, the direction that they should go.
Yeah. But that could still weigh down our vote.
Yeah. You know, Saturday, Sunday nights, whatever, if something happened, you're on the phone. You know, the chief's or whoever is going to call me, and then, you know, I would contact them, I was the board, and say, this is what's going on. And this is how I'm going to handle it, unless you have a, a problem with it.
We would have to carry it, Martin, in a group email anyway.
Exactly. Well, everybody answered an email. Yes.
In an emergency, you can do that.
Yeah. I mean, you can do it in an emergency situation.
You can share an emergency too. So the boiler situation can be handled in an emergency.
So I think, you know, number one, I think the liaison thing, once there's a, a town administrator, and you do the, the department heads every month coming to the meeting and doing a report, and I think that kind of goes away. I think it's a good idea from now on, until you have a town administrator to continue. At least there's some discussion and some communications between the departments.
But, I mean, or do we start with the reporting now, just instead of doing?
Well, maybe it, maybe the, maybe the board decides what we want down.
Try to eliminate some of that misinformation a lot.
We want the department heads to, every month.
Because I think, I think one of the things, at least from my perspective, that's shown out at a lot of the meetings lately, is our, other than capital planning, everyone else is like, oh, we're remote. But I hope that we're, we're marketable to a really good town TA candidate. And that we can start to eliminate some of our own internal friction. Because having been working in the public sector for over 20 years, and whenever someone's looking for a job, I'm getting phone calls, hey, what do you know about this? What do you know about that? You know, people are reaching out, you have to find out. And we want to make sure that we're, you know, that we're able to deliver a good message, and that, you know, people, we get the right people. If we get, you know, I just came home from coffee this morning, and there's still some discontent about a town, town TA in general, that it's an expensive proposition for the town. And if we get someone that's not good, that could be bad. That could be very, very bad. Number one.
And it has not worked in the past.
Correct. Yeah.
So since we're not here to vote, can we put it on an agenda for an upcoming meeting to either talk about the dissolution of the liaison and/or the addition of one of the reports? Yep, I just wrote that down.
Okay.
One of the things I would like to note, though, is it's important to, I don't want to sit at every board meeting deciding who's going to go where when we make a decision. So the liaison system, still, I think, even if we dissolve it a certain way, you need to have people assigned so that when a decision is made, it goes back to the said department head. Rather than us sitting every single time and deciding, this person's going to go this time, this person's going to go this time, because it wastes a lot of time.
Well, you can't make any decisions, though, as a liaison.
Well, of course not. But if we made, make a decision as a board, there needs to be someone to take that decision back if the department head is not in the room.
At least until there's a town.
At least until there's a town administrator. I don't think you can dissolve that entirely. I think that you need to have, you know, someone who's assigned, okay, something came up with me tonight.
The designated contact or something.
So, or even the other way, Tom's got an issue, he needs to come in, okay, let's make sure he's in on the agenda.
Area of talking again, but yeah, you're right. You don't want to make a decision at a selectmen's meeting, a select board's meeting. And then it just stays there, that no one gets back to the individual department head or whatever. It says, hey, we voted on it, you're all set, go forward.
It's a two-way communication.
Yeah. So you're right. Needs to be somebody that is assigned.
Someone needs to be a point person.
It's a sign.
And I don't want to have to make that decision every single time at a meeting, because it's inefficient.
Can I suggest a little ground on that, which would be that that liaison emailed the department head with CCs to the other two selectmen, so that everyone's on board with the communication back to the department head, but it just parcels off the task.
As long as the other two selectmen don't.
Respond.
Respond, and all.
Correct. So that everyone's on the same page.
Just notification is fine.
Because communication has been difficult to some departments.
That's, you know, something the board needs.
And the, and the message isn't always getting back in equal measure to the department heads.
All right. One, and number two, personnel committee. Apparently you have a committee, but you don't have enough members. Whether it're only two members, and it's a three-member board, so it's needed two to be present to even have a meeting. Definitely, if it's, if someone's busy or whatever, they'll come with it.
But the board also, and I'm pegged on one of the selectmen, the board also acts as personnel committee, too. So in the event one of the two existing members needs to step out due to a conflict or relationship, one, two, three of us step in. So there's always backup. So even though there's currently only two on the personnel committee, there is potential of five.
Now, how can you guys do that? Because the personnel bylaws says that you can't hold another position in town as a board member.
Selectmen have been doing it since I resigned from the committee over 10 years ago.
I'm also actually seeing, though, a lot of things that are getting sent back to personnel right now. I, where, you know, the process right now is being slowed down, because there's, it's not, it's not smooth right now.
It's not what?
Because the process is not smooth right now.
I think we have to, it's something that I've started, like, I'm realizing, like, for example, just, I need, the personnel needs to send information to the FinCom also, not just the selectmen. I think that's just it. We're not used to having, to have communication from them and disseminating it to the correct people.
And I think it's one of the things I brought up, I brought up for capital planning, I brought up at FinCom, that we had our budget kickoff meeting this year, which was the first one that has, since I've been here for five years. It really wasn't a budget kickoff meeting. I mean, I haven't got that official invitation to the meeting. Everyone wasn't necessarily at the table and well briefed on what everything was going to be. Because I ended up having some frustration, and I'm planning on meeting now with personnel on the way reviews were looked at and how things were done, that they had a lot of questions. They never asked. You know, it's, and it was like, you know, if you had a question, that's what works.
I mean, ask the department heads.
Come in, can you come to our meeting and explain why you put this on the review? And, and what backs up what you put? Instead of making an arbitrary decision that still puts us in the same hole. I, I think as we move forward, and I know Buzz and we talked, I think we have to be more definitive on getting our department heads to a meeting, getting the, the necessary boards and committees at this meeting as we kick things off our finances. I think that's one of my frustrations as I'm preparing a budget, and again, it all ties in with personnel, and I mean, is that what's our financial plan? What's our direction? Where, where are we really headed?
Mission, goals, and objectives.
Yeah. Yeah, and I understood that, you know, Buzz has finished up the letter at the last minute, and we got, you know, we got be frugal, so I meant, I'm like, I need a definition. But also, you know, we have goals. You know, we're looking at stabilization. What is our goal for stabilization? Where do we want to be? Where do we want things to be as we continue to move forward in the town? Because being out there on a daily basis, and I drink a lot of coffee with a lot of different people in town, and money is always the biggest issue with the town people. And I think we need to have a unified front as we talk about what our financial goals are and how we're, you know, managing things best for the town. It's all, it's, it seemed like over the years, and it's like, alright, you know, my turn, I'm lobbing this one in this year, and let's see what happens. Whereas if we were on the same page, and, okay, hey, listen, you, you got something extra in your budget last year because you had some jobs, it really, it's not happening this year. You're going to be, you know, 2%, and that's about it. Because this department needs something to get caught up and, and fix something. Or, hey, this year's a really tough year. You know, unless you have some extreme justification, we're level funded. I just think we need a little more cohesiveness when it comes to our, our planning. And I, it tied in, wasn't just directed at personnel, but it kind of tied in everything.
Who does HR Boilston?
We had a personnel committee. And similar to Burling, we could never get anybody to, to serve on it. We had two members in a five-member board, and they never did anything. They couldn't, they, they, they just didn't do anything. So I basically took over. My background was in HR, so I kind of took over that responsibility. And then just recently hired a part-time HR administrator. You know, that, even the warrant, for instance, when, when it came to raises and so forth in the town meeting warrant, it would say, as approved by the personnel board. Well, you know, we didn't have one, so they didn't approve it, so we kind of took it out. And then, I'm going to say, three years ago, could have been four years ago, we abolished the personnel, just at town meetings, said, we're going to just ban the board and just go away with it. I do think there's some, some good things that personnel board can do. They can certainly review, you know, job descriptions and things like that. They can certainly be the spearhead for performance reviews and those kinds of things.
It's tough in a small town, isn't it?
Yeah, it is.
And it's getting hard. I mean, I think we've heard this, I've heard it since I came to town, volunteerism and what the town was built on. It's hard. Yeah.
It is extremely hard.
It's hard. But as the last chairman of the personnel committee, I can tell you the reason why it disbanded for so long and that people quit on a three-year rotating basis. Before Lisa was on board, before Chris was on board, the Board of Selectmen provided zero help to the personnel committee. We would meet, no one would come. We would pass out policies and procedures, no one would review. So after three years, it's like, you know what? If you don't want to help us, I got to go. So, I mean, I'm happy that the two candidates that we have are willing to try. So maybe as the board, we work a little bit more closely with them and give them some guidance, instead of just, you're here, good luck.
It has been good to see they're, they're in the building a lot and want to learn.
Yeah, they do. So we need to take advantage of that. So again, maybe can't deliberate, can't chat, it's a future agenda item for our two members to come, to figure out what they need to do to become more effective, and how we can help them spread the word amongst folks here at the table and those on.
And they have been good about attending.
They have.
You know, we asked them, they do attend our meetings.
I have a suggestion about the Personnel, Personnel Board meeting earlier. Sorry, this is early in the morning for me, so a moment. People are always going to have feedback for them about how they can, their process abounds, how they can group communication, and you should, maybe you should give that to them. But my one suggestion is first tell them what they're doing right, and then give them your feedback, because otherwise, you're already in a, in a job that is easy to hate or be cranky with, and that's just the nature of the business, right? That's not your fault or theirs. But seriously, when you talk with them, if you want, if we want to keep them, first tell them what they're doing right, then give them feedback about how to improve their process and so forth.
Hey, just in your opinion, because you run the Personnel Committee before. Do you think it would be helpful if department heads met with them, explained what their department does and the role and responsibilities of the people within their department?
Absolutely, because when we held our meetings during the week, three of us would chat, house the family, house things, take care of business, and we'd stay there because no one would come. So, I mean, the information went out, there were multiple emails last, there were multiple reminders, there were documents that we were blocked at people's email boxes, so we were trying to get all forms of communication out there. Zero, zero support from the other committees, zero support from the Selectmen. That's why when our term came up, then they weren't staggered then. We were all in for three years, we all left.
June, Pauline, I'm Tom Cotten. I have to say, the HR department is huge for me as far as having a Personnel Committee. I know you don't like them, but.
I totally don't like them.
For me, I need them, because for my job to actually get done, I need a lot of answers. I need them quick. It can't wait a week or two weeks to get back to me. And I, I also feel that I can honestly say this, is that the reason why we had a problem before, before your group, was because the Selectmen didn't support what Personnel did. So if they did a lot of research that was totally against the way the Selectmen thought, even though it was right.
They shut it down.
They were done. So it became very frustrating for them that they put in all this time, effort, and really did a great job, just to be shot out of the water. And I feel I can say that with confidence that that is one of the main reasons before your group, they didn't dissolve. I'm finding that not just with Personnel, but with a lot of the new committees and boards, is that there is no policy procedure manual, more so than, I mean, I have laws I have to follow for my job, and I'm working on policies and procedures manuals so that if I should drop dead tomorrow, somebody can come in and see exactly how we do change in our office. So.
We'll just probably back up and take it. We can get the accountant's office.
I saw some robotic legs on the front the other day.
There you go. Just get it removed.
But unfortunately, I feel Personnel came in with nothing.
No rules.
They absolutely had no idea.
They're buried.
And unfortunately, they're just getting little chunks from people, and they're getting the problems thrown at them really quickly without any assistance. So I think that's why they didn't meet with the department heads this year, is because they didn't know they were supposed to meet, but before they actually finalized or if they had questions. That's my thought on it, and I haven't actually talked to them about it, because I'm finding that as soon as one of the boards talks to them or throws something back at them, they're like, oh yeah, okay, no problem. But they have done a lot of work, they have done a lot of research, and I give them a lot of credit for that and put up with all of our craps. My only concern is with doing away, like you had said, that in Boilstun, they had done away with the Personnel Committee, because I think we met when we were trying to see if we could share a person for HR. I almost feel that we need a separate person in HR versus having the town administrator do it, just because it's not just the people under the town administrator. You also have elected boards who are in charge of their own people that still need assistance and still need review. Most of our departments, I don't know if they have a problem with it, but I'm just saying that in general, they don't always report to the board, you know, some of the people that are involved.
And that's one, part of the reason why we went to a part-time HR administrator, fifteen or sixteen hours a week, but it was somebody there. If an employee had an issue, they could go there and then talk about it. If one of the departments, you know, if Board of Health had an issue with one of their employees, they could contact the HR person and get direction on how to handle it or whatever it might be. When I did have it, for the three or four years that I did have it, it was, it puts a lot on your plate, and you're already doing, you know, TA is already doing, you know, fifty, sixty hours, and now he's got this stuff, or she's got this stuff to deal with as well, so we just, you know, we got to do something with this.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of our stuff needs to be updated, because I think if we just do a little bit more details in our actual policies, it would probably help a lot of us, but.
I think the other issue too, is that a Personnel Board can get involved in is like succession planning. You talked about what if I turn it back and go, and that was always an issue for me. You know, if one of the people in the Board of Recession's Office had an issue and wasn't able to perform any longer, what do we do? Do we have somebody that has some experience there that we could just move in, even on an interim basis? You know, how do we do it? Tom Clark was another one, you know, we have an assistant, great. Are they able, in an emergency or a situation, to pull up? So, I mean, there's a lot of things. I think what's happening in Berlin, at least as an outsider, is that the town is growing. There's a lot, a lot of new people coming in. The days of all volunteer, everything are kind of going by the wayside. People are busy, they don't have a lot of time to be volunteering for boards that we need all the time and all that kind of stuff, so a lot of this stuff is kind of just not being done, or if it's being done, it's not being done properly. It's, you know, just kind of like, yeah, we'll get it done, we're done with that, you know, but.
Well, I feel that the town has grown very quickly, because now we're a thirteen-plus million dollar company that we're running on part-time people. You guys are doing an awesome job, and don't hear me anything other than that, because I mean it, Tom, except for, but everybody's doing a really good job.
You signed the box.
We're tied, by the way. So, but it's one of those things, like, it's, it's a huge company that we're running, even though we're not there to make money, and we're working on part-time people. We have a lot of people in the smaller departments, conservation, planning, that spend tons and tons of time, and they're not compensated for it. And it's harder and harder to expect them to work twenty hours a week doing townwork.
It is, it's a thirteen million, fourteen million dollar business.
And even with the board of Selectmen, I mean, if you guys are there like forever.
Part-time people or volunteer people.
So it's hard, and even though a lot of this stuff, and, because unfortunately, I have to say, or fortunately, I've been here thirty years, this is my thirtieth year, and so I've seen it grow, and I've seen things change, and I've seen people change. I'm trying to be better at changing myself. Some things are hard.
You like it just the way you are.
But I think that it's hard, because in the old days, when somebody left, they would train the new group or the new person, and we're not getting that, in my area anyway. We're not having that training session, so I think that this kind of gets away a little bit from Personnel, but it's kind of the general. We need to have some sort of policies in effect, so people know what they're doing and what they're getting into, because a lot of people don't have any idea what you get into when you get here. So it's hard.
And the expectation, I'm sorry, the expectations are really high, like, I know Tim on the Energy Committee, he was on the Energy Committee in Chelmsford, and it is an entirely different job here, and sometimes there's this expectation that our volunteer boards are going to handle contracts and handle, I mean.
But here they do, that's the sad part about it, unfortunately.
But they shouldn't be, they shouldn't be.
Maybe not, but.
But there's nobody else.
To do it.
To do it.
These jobs have changed, I mean, I know for public safety, our jobs have changed tremendously over the last forty years that I've been in, and the level of expectations has risen, the level of training and education has gone way up, so I'm sure, even with the volunteer boards, what they need to know to be able to volunteer on those boards and to be able to attain the training and continuing education to be current, has probably fallen by the wayside, because a lot of the boards don't know that this training and education is out there, or, again, they're volunteering to come out one night a week, as it is, they can't, you know, take a day off from work or get this other training or whatever, so it's, it's very difficult. And again, running a business on volunteer health, as we know, volunteers in all of us are waiting.
By the way, I'm Buzz, I'm the chair of the Finance Committee, I forgot to tell you who I was. Couple of things. The more I listen to various conversations, the more I start to lean toward hiring an interim town administrator for the first person. Someone experienced, someone who knows they're going to be here for a set period of time, someone who knows they're coming into a town that's not done it before, sort of set the stage for someone to come in long-term, just a thought, just a recommendation from me. I want to say something else, I'm always leery of talking about public service as a business. I've heard the same, pardon me, crap in the nonprofit world, and I've seen nonprofits go off the rails because of that and fail to view to their mission and start focusing on making money instead of carrying on the mission they're set up for. And I'm not saying that we shouldn't be efficient, that we shouldn't, you know, have appropriate policies or carry out our jobs appropriately, we just want to be, you know, we're not Polaroid, we're not Apple.
Well, I wasn't saying that.
I know that, but I guess, I think what I meant to add is, it's a business in the sense that the residents are expecting services and are expecting the, the town to provide those services.
I hear what you're saying, I still don't like the language.
I get what you're saying.
We don't disagree on the subject.
I almost forget more than one.
The other thing on interim town administrator, it's interesting that I met Donnie Lowe the other night, and I told him I was coming here, and we talked about what you're doing, and both of us agreed that it's important, very important, that the first person coming in here has experience, that they've done it before, they know how to set it up, they know what to do. And it can be a short-term thing, as you said, an interim, you know, six months, a year, whatever it might be. Come in, set the place up, get things in order, and then go get someone for a full-time
Beyond the fact that it is a thirteen million dollar business, there is. It's not, he doesn't like the word business. It's not a business. You're using thirteen million dollars of taxpayer money, and there is not just an inefficiency in providing service, there's a huge time sink, wasted staff time, when well-meaning volunteers who turn over often, don't understand their mission, well-meaning, thank God they're putting their hand up and volunteering, but the time it causes staff to undo what well-meaning volunteers are doing is a vast waste of time, money and time. That's the money part of it, that I see. And just on the interim part, in my experience, having been a reporter in different, this town is crying for a very well-skilled interim. First, kind of like swooping in with Chief Z, all your stuff on a thumb drive, get everything cleaned up and turnkey for another person or the same person, but to network all these silos and islands is massive. We don't even have uniform hours, so you had Monday night staff all showing up. There are so many, there's such a legacy of separate silos here, that to even tell the department has to be present.
The hours of Town Hall and the different departments, and I was like, wow.
We don't have uniforming now.
Some people are here these hours, and these people aren't, but they're here these hours and these people aren't. I mean, we did twenty-six hours a week, or the Town Hall was open twenty-six hours a week. It was Monday from eight to two, and then six to eight, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, eight to two. Those were the hours. They were closed on Fridays. Didn't mean people weren't there. I was there, my assistant was there, we were there, but the public wasn't coming in. The Treasurer's Office, Collector's Office, if it was tax season, she'd come in and open the office for a couple of nights during the week as well. So it was, they were standard hours. It wasn't, well, you know, the accountant's here, but the Treasurer's not, and, you know, this one's not, and, well, the building inspector is not here anymore, it's extra days and nights and whatever, so it might be something you may want to think about, you know, a standard hour.
I think they're seeing the legacy of Berlin that was starting to adapt toward the Berlin that is, and I, yeah, and I think that's a good idea.
I look at when I started five years ago, and pretty much at lunchtime every day, the only one in the building was June upstairs.
But you still can't, you can't set hours for elected.
No, elected.
Right, you're right. And it's definitely important. Go back on your business, Tom, one of the announcements I like to use with residents, it's close to like retirement accounts, that when you pay your taxes, you're making an investment, and that we have an obligation to manage that money for you properly. And, you know, that, yeah, it is, it does function as a business, but it isn't. We don't want to stay away from that mindset of that. But I look at it as we have a responsibility, and that as a taxpayer, you wouldn't invest your money for your retirement into a poorly managed or, you know, a group without a plan. You know, you're looking at their history, you're looking at what they do, and you write your check to pay your taxes, you're making an investment, you're making a long-term investment, and there's an expectation that we need to manage that money.
Hard to reveal, but some towns do go belly up. We're nowhere near that.
There's some that are close right now.
Well, I think the board has gotten the idea of Personnel Committee and what, you know, you folks are suggesting, and I think they have it on their agenda for future meetings.
When we talk about TA, that you talked about bringing in someone experienced or someone that, as an interim, wherever they may be, if they're retired and they commit as an interim, that's one thing.
So we need Marty or something.
But, but if we're looking to bring in somebody that may be at the last two, three years of their career, and they're coming in here, they're going to do setup, and then they're going to retire, we're not going to be able to attract that person. One thing that is an issue for something like that is, we're one of six communities in the state that doesn't offer health insurance to their retirees. So, you know, out of three hundred and fifty-one, we're one of six. That's something that's going to weigh on someone with experience that wants to commit. You know, I know, I hear a lot of frustration from my guys, this kind of goes back to Personnel too, because I think they need to be involved in some of this, in the discussion of health insurance, how health insurance is done. You know, without an HR person to really look at that, there's so many options out there to explore, and I know this is something I think coming in, but that needs to be a serious, serious discussion on what we look for. We have some additional funding that's going to start rolling into the town for different reasons. If that could be an offer in the future, that, you know, whatever change in employee contributions or whatever it does, we need to plan for future expenses. And if you look at OPEB, and you look at what towns are getting themselves into, if we look at funding streams that are starting to come in, those are things that we need to start possibly saving for right now. I think when you look at a lot of that retirement stuff, public safety is going to be possibly the biggest drain in the future. We may have possibly some money coming in from Murrabridge that we can set aside, there's some things that we can start to think about if that's something that can be on the table in the future. So it's a discussion we have to have, but when I just hear of bringing in an interim or bringing in someone experienced, when we start to advertise things, and we have to know that this could be a deal breaker for a lot of incredibly well-qualified people.
We do have the IAC together, and we've gotten some good feedback from your guys, the teachers, and we're working on looking at a consultant.
Which TLA is that? Which three-letter abbreviation is that?
Insurance Advisory Committee.
Okay.
Just like. The town management study committees did recommend that we bring in an interim with experience, so all of that will go to this reconfirm that we're looking at here.
Mary, you have something?
We've had a multi-year effort by the Treasurer to look at insurance in every single December. Oops, time runs out. There has not been a real earnest review, it just stays with Maya. Not that Maya's bad, but some of the people in the IAC had asked for feedback from others, other vendors, other consultants, it just never happens. So that's the biggest expense in the town, bigger than public safety, and it doesn't ever get really meaningfully addressed, with a Treasurer who's been very added about not having benefits for retirees. So if department heads want to be heard on that, then maybe they should make their voices be heard, because it's been left to the IAC, that's not always fully staffed, to advise the Selectmen on this.
I want to put a quick word in on the Department of Insurance. I know Dennis is always like, can't get hit by the Cadillac tax, can't get hit by the Cadillac tax, can't get hit by, I'm like, Dennis, shut up. I love Dennis dearly, but I'm okay with having that as a piece of the conversation. But there's another piece of the conversation, which is what kind of quality of health insurance are we providing to our damn employees? And yes, okay, the Cadillac tax should be a piece of that conversation, but the conversation should not be framed through, we can't hit the Cadillac tax, because that.
I think we've realized that it may or may not happen.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that, because if I hear it one more time, I'm going to throw something soft at Dennis.
We've already had a conversation about it.
Okay, good.
All right, moving on to the Capitol Planning Committee.
I believe you have one.
Yeah, this has actually been, I've been vocal about that. I've actually gone to the last Capitol Planning meeting, there's some changes coming. They, there's been some good discussions, even at the FinCon meeting the other day, and they're talking about setting up meetings with every department head, and we're moving forward now. I think it was, you know, we've had some discussions about it, you know, with the discussions with the Finance Committee, different representatives, there's some things that need to change, seems like those changes are starting to come slowly.
It seems like those changes are starting to come slowly, and it's tough, because we're smacked out in the middle of, you know, the budget process here and can't undo anything and go back and start again. But I think some ideas have been heard, and hopefully as we move into next year, it's going to be good.
I think a lot of it again goes with the whole flow, the process, the whole policy, the way that things go. It's like, we don't really have one, I mean, we do have a bylaw now, or before it was APAC, but it's still...
It goes back to some of the other bylaws that we didn't follow.
It's that, it's that whole actually incorporating it into how do you do it, not just the thought process.
And for folks to have frustrations with the capital planning committee, none of them are here, so we can pick on them.
It's not fair.
I didn't say it was fair. But anyway, I was my current thought, sorry, warnings on it, just don't work well. I think, A, it's, you know, they're fairly new, they have hewed carefully to the long Berlin tradition of living in their own silo. Lots of us have been guilty of that, I'm not just picking on them. And I, I think that that, if it all goes well, I think that will start to change. But if there are folks that have thoughts about capital planning, that haven't talked to them or talked to them, I'm more than happy to have that conversation with anybody that needs to have it, that's fine. I can't tell them what to do, but I think it's just...
And I also think the town administration coming in and facilitating that conversation between everybody, rather than once again having to bring that in that silo, should help with that process.
Is there a dollar figure that the capital planning committee needs to get involved?
They came up with one.
Well, so one of the issues, one of the issues is actually in the bylaw, the way it defines capital is anything that we bond, and then if, you know, what is a capital item, anything that goes out to bond, or extraordinary expenses that are a capital item. So, you know, but it doesn't, it's, it's, the definition is different. They're brand-new and they've got a, an initial capital plan in place, which makes, you know...
It's a good start.
It's a good start, you know, it's a Volkswagen, it's used, it's doing an okay job, it's going to grow. The history of capital has been tough, that, you know, you needed new carpeting on the stairs at the library, and that was a, you know, a three thousand dollar capital item to ensure that it got spent on. And so capital was sometimes used to make sure that people were spending things in certain ways.
And I choose different ways.
And I was going to say, in the past, that's kind of the way you had to do it, because we gave it to people and they applied it, sometimes it didn't go to them.
Yeah, we have other ways that we can.
In my former life, capital was fifteen thousand dollars or more, and out of life expectancy of five years or more, that was considered. And so, but we don't have, we don't have those rules, but we're working, we're talking about that.
We'll get there, keep giving feedback, we'll get there.
I think the more communication is, I keep harping on it.
I was going to say, that in capital planning, when I showed up, and like I said, I keep opening my mouth, so I'm going to keep showing up to the meeting. And I told Buzz that, I said, if I'm going to open my mouth, but we're going to meet, I'm going to show up to at least hear what's going on. Capital planning was real, it was a, I thought it was a very productive meeting the last meeting. And I think it kind of started like, yeah, we have all these numbers on a spreadsheet, but it's not really planned, it's numbers on a spreadsheet, and it was...
Will we disband the capital planning?
Did you? I think, and I don't know for sure, but I think what happened was, for years, there was a need for a new DPW building, and the capital planning people had it on their radar and kept coming forward, trying to get it. The town kept saying, no, no, no. And I think they kind of got frustrated and said, well, you know what, you don't want to do anything, you don't want to follow our plan, so why are we...
Similar to our personnel issues.
Yeah. So we kind of just disbanded it, we said, okay, if they're not going to meet, we just... So it worked, it was between the TA, Board of Selectmen, and the Finance Committee.
Well, let's hope we don't get there, because the Finance Committee doesn't need that work, I just got that.
No, well, I mean, you know, we did get a DPW building, you know, we had it on the, on the town meeting warrant, it passed finally after twenty-some odd years of it being empty, and everything went well. I think what we do is we use, I keep saying what we do, what we did is, is, for instance, ambulances, fire trucks, cruisers, were all warrant articles and the money came from free cash. We had, we were fortunate in that five years in a row, we had well over a million dollars in free cash available, and we used it to buy cruisers, we used it to buy tasers, we used it to buy ambulances, we used it for, you know, all of those kinds of things, mostly public safety, although we did buy Plows and Sanders and all of those kinds of, you know, dump trucks with that free cash money. So that all of that stuff was not on the tax rate, it was coming from money that was, you know, kind of there free cash.
See, we're even more fortunate here, that we have some significant mitigation, like we're trying to plan for, and we're working now with finance to try and get that into it, we have worked with a thirty-year plan to never hit tax dollars.
And not hit free cash, and not, yeah. Someone asked earlier about, you know, stabilization fund, what's the number, where should it be? Well, the state suggests ten percent of your annual budget, and we always made sure that every year, if there was money, if we were under the ten percent, we took free cash money and put it in stabilization. And there were, there were years where stabilization was terrific, and we didn't have to do anything, so we used, you know, pretty much all of the free cash to buy stock that we needed, whether it be DPW or whoever was in labor, a lot of different places.
Wouldn't the overall budget have been close? I'm sorry, I'm a job, I'm totally official, so...
What typically would happen was, I would send out a budget advisory letter to all of the department heads, indicating to them that, whatever, you know, whatever the situation was, you know, we're going to have a little bit of extra money this year, or, you know, we don't have any money, keep your budgets level funded, you know, blah, blah, blah. And I would give them dates when, when those things had to be into me. I would then take them, compile them all into a report-type of thing for each department, and then sit with the department heads, say, okay, why do you need this, what's this, that whole thing? And then I would present it to the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee, and go through it line by line, if they were interested. And the FinCom would then meet with each department head on an individual basis and go through their budget and make cuts wherever they thought were needed, and then it went through the printer and to me. Yes?
Does, did your warrant include a recommendation not just from FinCom, but from the selectmen? Here the selectmen don't weigh in on the...
Right, all money articles were strictly the Finance Committee.
Strictly, okay.
If, if an article was sponsored by the Board of Selectmen, it would note it, note that in the article, sponsored by the Board of Selectmen or the Planning Board or whoever it was. But the selectmen, they didn't actually recommend or not recommend any budgetary items, they, they, I think they felt that if it's in there, we approved it, because they would, they would approve the budget, and the Finance Committee would approve the budget. I mean, Finance Committee typically didn't even do it until they had a town meeting.
Do what?
Make a recommendation.
That's the vice version of madness, but it's a work for them, not going to work for us.
Yeah, well, that's just...
Yeah, yeah, it was.
So, by here that you're in budgetary times right now, my budget was always prepared before January and delivered to the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. Prior to January one, they would all have lined up, whatever it was.
Well, our deadline is supposed to be December thirty, but...
But it's done individually to the selectmen, gets compiled, gets sent to June, so kind of what you would do with compiling it all and getting it to FinCom.
And going, yeah, going and asking those questions.
It's, it's a different animal.
That has to happen after it comes in front of the board, and it's just...
The complete insanity right now is the first time the budget gets compiled in a complete spreadsheet, we do it, the final yes.
Well, they do, they do the whole spreadsheet thing, but I do, I have...
Oh, if we had a town, if we had a town administrator who would create the actual budget spreadsheet and give it to us, I would kiss their feet.
Really?
Oh, yeah, it's ridiculous.
I mean, it's crazy.
It's a, it's a big job.
But you still don't do it for elected officials, for people under the elected officials?
The elected officials would submit, I would send the letter and the, and the form to be filled in by every department, whether they're elected or appointed or whatever it was, the Board of Health would get one, the Board of Sessions would get one, Planning Board would get one.
So you made your part of my job.
Everybody got it, and everybody put down what they wanted.
Hey, if there are elected officials that don't want to give it to a town administrator, they would get it.
The thing was, when I met with each of the department heads, they could, they could, you know, describe what they needed, why their budget went up, you know, eighteen percent in a specific line. So then, when the Board of Selectmen received it, I already had that information. So that individual department head didn't necessarily have to meet with the Board of Selectmen.
So it's pretty much then it would take that part of the whole, so you guys didn't have to deliberate with each department? It would just be, here it is, what do you have?
Right, here it is, what do you have, the questions, well, here's why that's there, here's why this is there.
Probably be tested.
And, and it was kind of done, then the FinCom would meet with each department.
How soon or how early would you start the budget process, like October?
October, I would send the letter, the initial letter in October.
And do it a month early?
And gave them, you know, thirty days, forty-five days to get the stuff back. And typically we would say, I would say to them, do not include any salary increases in your budget.
Why?
They would not put any salary increases in their budgets, that was something that the Finance Committee, myself, and typically that was it, would determine.
Because you didn't...
What the raises.
Because you did away with personnel, right?
Right.
And that was based on reviews and everything else. And you were able to get your school committee to submit their budget on time?
Well, the school committee was totally separate, I mean, they, they went to tell me, that was their budget. I mean, they would, they would discuss it with the Finance Committee, and if the selectmen had an issue with it, like we did, like they did several years, they would call them in, and the, the school committee would sit in front of them and say, this is why we want a four percent or a six percent or nine percent increase, these are the reasons. And, you know, the Board of Selectmen and the FinCom would say, it's not doable, you need to be here, and make sure they got there.
So you would review evaluations for employees who are elected? So that keeps getting back to June's point, to June's point, to June's point. You did review people who are under-elected or elected officials?
There were no job reviews, no appraisals.
There were no...
No performance.
You didn't do annual performances, no feedback to your employees about how they performed?
Hold on, hold on.
You were a czar.
No, we did not, we did not do, they never did. The town never did any kind of performance.
So was it just across-the-board increases, or...
Typically it was cost-of-living adjustment. And if, if somebody felt that a person in their department deserved a bigger increase merit, they needed, you know, because they had done something outstanding, they would then come and say, I want to do this because...
So you don't have a...
The FinCom would do that.
What about salary adjustments?
Do you have a classification for grades and steps?
We do.
Okay.
Yeah, mostly everything was either by step or by just a general cost of living increase across, wasn't tied to a performance rate.
How did you use that classification, if you were there a year, you went up a step?
Typically it was a year.
Until you maxed it, and then...
Kind of just cost of living.
So that way there when you went up, did a new hire, you would have, this is what the pay range is?
Depending on your experience.
And your, your job title.
So folks stepped up each year generally?
Until they maxed.
Generally, but not everybody, I mean...
And the step was just, it was a COLA and a step?
Right, well, the steps were only in certain departments, they weren't across-the-board, the steps were like...
You're classified in a grade?
Yeah, they were, police department were, were steps, fire department was, highway department was, but like clerical staff in the town hall typically was not. They were not on steps, there was no steps, they were just cost of living, unless they did something outstanding that their department head felt they deserved, something above what the cost of living was.
Can I suggest we go back to the letter agenda and just, I feel like this is useful, but...
Yeah, because unfortunately I'm one of those folks who have to leave, since I only saw that there were six items on the agenda, so discussion is great, but if we, can we have this as a selectmen meeting? So if we could focus on the remaining three, that would be awesome. Thank you.
So we're at number four.
Yeah, administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen, some issues surrounding this position, and I guess I understand that, the eyes and ears of the board, you know, a person gets a lot of stuff that maybe is not necessarily a job description. I don't know if there's a job description.
There is, because the allowance could provide it, as soon as the date of the letter.
Yeah.
And I think, you know, I changed administrative assistance job title, when I got there it was administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen, and we changed it to administrative assistant to the town administrator and Board of Selectmen. Just because the title and job description as it was, if the wrong person was in that position, they could say, I don't work for you. You need, you want that, you're going to get the Board of Selectmen to tell me to do it, because, you know, I work for them. So we said, ah, you know, we need to change that.
That makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, and I mean, frankly, the person had enough to do. I mean, I did all my letters and all of that stuff myself, because they were just, they had a lot of stuff.
I think, I think a lot of this was back to the lack of a town administrator, and that what was the job delineated as, like we go back to a couple of previous boards, and there were things that probably should have been the board's thing, but they didn't want to deal with it. And then that creates a gray area on what are you making decisions on, what decisions have to be made on a Monday, and then or on a Friday or a Thursday, and it was, I was falling back to Mary to quasi-make decisions at times, and it's, you know, what was the board's expectation, what should our expectations be? It got really muddy, and so, you know, in the last couple of weeks, there's been a new job description that's been finalized, so I think that's going to help, and I think a TA is going to help as well.
I think over the three years that I've been here, I've seen, depending on who the selectmen were at any given time, sometimes the administrative assistant position was utilized like a town manager, and sometimes it was utilized like a clerk. So, and it depend on, depend on who wanted, what had done at what point in time, which isn't fair to merit the person in the position to, you know, not have a clear set of guidelines.
And then not care to us, who do we go to and how, how does it get done? Does it get done differently for this department, then it gets done for that department, depending on who your liaison was? It just, it all kind of tied together.
I think that resolves itself when you get a town administrator. Consolidation of departments. So pretending, you know, probably it's going to take a little while to get used to what they're doing and what they should be doing, yeah.
If I make it through today, it'll be fourteen weeks.
And how many hours and how many minutes?
Four hours.
But again, it's going to take a little while to figure out, you know, what would be good here. I mean, you know, I don't know if you want to add facilities onto the...
He's already got it.
He's already got it.
And I said that, that's kind of one of the issues that's... Dave came in as the new DPW director, he doesn't do much for the DPW, except kind of manages the budget and gets them going in the mornings. And I know from conversations we had, and I don't want to speak for him, but cringes when he sees them working alone doing certain things. We have a group of guys that does amazing work, but they need help, and we've got a heating system that supposedly was fixed three years ago, and, you know, we're... we're fighting to have heat in our building every day, and that's taken up a lot of his time. Causes frustration on their end, listening to the guys in the, in the highway. It causes frustration on our end, on getting things fixed in the building. And we started having discussions on, and it was beyond that position, on different activities that happen within the town, and how can we better assign those positions? One, without hiring more people and, and making a facilities manager specific. And, and kind of, you know, started to come up with some ideas on how to cross over some of the other jobs and take advantage of some of the abilities other people have. I mean, I, I'm making a presentation when I present my budget Monday night on combining, you know, animal control, animal inspector, and the stuff that I have that can help. And there's, I think there's other things that we need to start to look at and combine to make ourselves run more efficiently without that, without that personnel.
Yes.
I have to say that it's on a radar.
Yeah.
All of this is on a radar.
Again, it comes down to there's just so many hours in a day.
Right, yeah.
We want to give him a chance to see and suggest, you know, what do you think we need to do?
If you were to say right now what you think we need to do, what would you say?
Camera, camera.
But seriously?
In all honesty, it's not, it's not fit to the crew to not ask an additional person working with them. You know, I've been tracking my hours relatively loosely, as how much time I devote to buildings and DPW. And I devote about thirty percent of my time to DPW work, which isn't fair to the town, to the guys. It just, you know, there's a lot of things that aren't getting done. And, uh, and there's a lot of times the guys are out there working by themselves, and they really shouldn't be. It's a safety issue. So, but the, the building thing, I think I was kind of sold a bag of goods when I got hired. It should have been, uh, Facilities Manager at DPW, because that's what it's shaking out to be. I don't hate doing the job, but it's really not what I was intended on being hired to. You know, it takes up, it takes up too much time.
There wasn't enough of the facilities in the job description.
Correct, in the job. And, uh.
Well, one of the things you, you may want to at least think about, you may not want to do anything now, is, is having a, an actual facilities person. Because you've got a brand-new building over there that if it's not geared for, it's going to rot, and it's, everything's going to be broken in ten years. That thing should last in thirty, forty years, but it's going to need work.
That's not just that.
Another thing, you know, you got the, Tom Hall and the police building and fire building over there, great building.
I think that's one of the.
But you got issues with it, that somebody who focuses their time on that is going to take care of those things. Because they're not going to have to go spend thirty percent of their day at DPW. They're going to be concerned with just the buildings.
I think what's hard, though, is, is you just said, looking to hiring another person. You know, we're already looking this year, it's going to add a TA, that's, you know. All right, well, now, we've already had the discussion about HR.
Right.
Now, and now we're having a discussion, it's, it's a lot to ask.
It is.
You know, and that's, it is. That's why we probably have to have.
I'm not saying right now, I'm saying, you know, over the course of time, you can add a TA, then, then maybe you might get a facilities person in a couple of years, Donald, and then you look at, you know, somebody in, in HR or something.
But we also have to remember, though, this stuff is actually happening now.
IT.
It's not like we can say, you know, stop, stop doing the municipal building and work on Highway right now. Unfortunately, that's, that's kind of why we're here, is because these things are happening now. It's kind of like having the TA come in in six months. There's still issues that we're having now, and we still have to do, I still have to do my job with payroll for the next six months, people want to be paid properly.
Right.
So it, I get, and yes, it's a lot, and, and we're not, it's the financial part of it, too, we need to look at, but I think we also, again, go back to the old plan thing, where times have changed over the course of the last few years. And, and, and yes, budgets are expanding, and maybe they should, you know, but it's a matter of, okay, how can you do that if, you know, people are putting in tons of time and working on things that not necessarily are there? You know what I mean? But it has to still get done. So I think that's a lot of it, too, is that, um, is trying to find the time to sit down and actually start going through some of these things and try to figure out something that makes it easier.
Well, I think we're going to have some conversations at this Selectmen's meeting now. I want to hear from Lisa and Peg what they specifically want to try to tackle or talk about next agenda.
Yeah, because I mean, it's just, I mean, people only have so many hours in the day, that's the whole thing right now.
Yeah, and it's, we also can't, you know, look at July and say, hey, Town Administrator. Okay, here. There you go.
I'll be in my office. They certainly don't want to scare them away.
Yeah, I mean, right.
I think from the outside, it looks very attractive for a TA. Really don't, I don't think it'll be a problem, but I, you know, they might be a little surprised like Dave once he gets a job.
Well, unfortunately, I think they're going to be really surprised like Dave.
But there, but there's a lot of people that, that ask. And they, and they ask, they'll ask, they'll know some of the people that work for me, they'll know people that work for the Fire Department, and they'll, they'll start to reach out and put the feelers out, or they'll call Don next door. You know, they're, they're going to call people that know the community.
Yes.
And then they hear that one thing, they're like, hmm.
And they say, you want me to do, you want me to do what, how much?
Yeah.
That's going to be a huge.
So.
So if we can all try.
The more we get our ducks in a row, the better, you know.
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely, whatever we can do.
No, I like, and I, I think, like, I think a lot of this has been good.
Yeah.
To talk about it, we, we can't do every week.
And that's the hard thing, too, is you guys have business to take care of. Not that this isn't business, but you guys have business. It's not like this is your whole problem.
Well, you know, I, I want to hear. I want to hear from people. Uh, you know, if you want to talk about something specific at a meeting, please let us know.
Well, Marty, can I, Marty, Peter Hoppen, Economic Development. You've clearly been around the block, you've got a bunch of wisdom in this business.
I was dead old.
Don't look at the air reporting. But given your wisdom, what's your impression and observation of a thirteen million dollar buzz for giving business? And, thanks.
Could you just wait now?
Thirteen million dollar entity and three thousand person base. What's your impression of our operations? Personnel, budget, whatever, whatever your reaction might be to the question? Given, I mean, we're pretty high budgeted for a small community. And, uh, you know, we're talking about adding, judging a lot.
I think all the pieces are there, other than a Town Administrator, which I think is a great idea even. But, you know, you have all the pieces in place, it's just getting parking. Getting the FinCom to know what planning is, that it's thinking about, getting the, you know, all of the departments understanding. And then what I did the first time, first thing I did in Boilston was I started a monthly Department Head meeting. So every month, I'd order coffee and muffins, and all of the Department Heads would come in, and I talked to them about what the Board of Selectmen was doing and what was going on, and then went around the room, and each of them talked about what their department was doing. What ideas they had, what items they were working on, what initiatives, whatever it might be. So that when we got up at the end of the hour and a half, every Department Head knew everything that was going on in the town. So there were no questions, there were no surprises. And, and I used to tell all of them, when you go back to your departments, make sure you tell your people what's happening. Make sure they know what's going on at the DPW. Make sure they know that, you know, there's a, there's a motorcycle parade coming through town next week, whatever it might be. But I do, I think you, you got all the pieces there, it's just a matter of getting everybody working together on, in the same direction.
So maybe, maybe it wasn't that clear. Given that we're the size we are and the budget we have, how does that strike you? I mean, for a three thousand person, admittedly, we've got a decent commercial base, but that thirteen million dollars, how does that strike you? Thirteen, fourteen million? I mean, compared to other small communities?
It's, it's high, you know.
Why, why are we unable to do it for this?
I don't know, I don't know why it's, you know.
Is that a question we should think about?
Can't actually find your budget online, I tried to, but I can't.
Is that a question we want to know the answer to?
Very soon.
No, I, I, I don't give you my, my personal thoughts, is Berlin was always a rich community as far as I was concerned. They always had money. Everybody in Berlin had money, so, so what if their budget's thirteen million dollars? Everybody over there's got money. What's the big deal? Now, having been Town Government for ten years or so, I'm understanding that, you know what? It's high. That's a lot of money to be spending for three thousand people to be spending. Boilston was forty-five hundred with about a fourteen-two budget. You know, so a million dollars more with fifteen hundred more people, that's. And why is that? I, I don't know. I'd have to really look at your budget. I know that, um, you know.
Is that a question that we should?
We had a lot of money at, at the end of the year left over.
Is that a question we should know the answer to, or is it not that relevant?
I don't know. Obviously, you're going to be getting a lot of new things. You're going to be getting another hotel, you're going to be getting maybe two hotels, you know, an apartment complex that is all going to generate revenue. What you don't want to do is you don't want to go spending it willy-nilly and saying, oh, we need this, and we need that, and we better do this. No, but what you might want to do is what we did in Boilston is every year, try to lower the tax rate.
At one, at one point in time, this is more a finance type of question, but it, it was one of those where we actually had a large levy capacity that wasn't being used. And it was more of trying to keep the, the tax rate level when we had all of the new income coming in from the malls.
Right.
So at one time, there was a plan that was to keep things level, so that we could, we didn't take major hits, whether it be refunding like we did last year, and then hitting it up this year. So it was more of an, that's what the, for a finance committee to work on and, and capital planning to, that was a big chunk of it, was capital planning, was to try to keep things level. So I think it's more of to actually look at the overall budget and not necessarily what we could tax people, because we're not taxing them what we really could tax them.
If Boilston was in a similar situation, they were below the, the levy limit. But like I said earlier, we, we took money from free cash every year and gave it to the assessors to apply to the tax rate. Now, it was two hundred and fifty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year. Doesn't count for much, it's maybe a penny or two on the tax rate, but at least it was an effort by, by the board and by, by everybody to say, hey, you know, we understand.
So that might be something for us to start, it's just a financial?
Was there any, did you use any specialized stabilization funds or start looking into that? Especially when we have the revenue streams that are coming in, so that we can start to?
Yeah, we really didn't. We had the regular stabilization that had ten percent of the, of the budget in it. Each department kind of had a, a, an account. You know, user fees and stuff for, Proxim Rec would go into this, and they'd get to use that, those funds. Amulets Enterprise went a long way towards paying for an ambulance or paying for a fire truck, so, you know, we would take money out of that every year.
We may want to.
Say the tax rate is decent.
Firefighter, not firefighter, but EMTs.
We actually have a very good tax rate.
Exactly.
If you, if you look at the towns around, sorry, this discussion's going to be, um...
I was just going to say, this is more about financial.
I'll gather. I'm just taking advantage of him being here and asking questions.
No, 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 don't do this, the whole thing.
This is also, it's the morning, and I'm like.
Well, no. You're going to drag in here in the morning and have this discussion? Thanks a lot!
Anyway, it's not that it doesn't make sense, but, um, no, I mean, you know, we've, we do have a lot of extra levy limit, and we have, you know, if you look, we get a booklet every year from the, there's an Association of Finance Committees for the Commonwealth, and we're in the five ten percent due to our tax rate. And unfortunately, at the same time, the real estate values in town are skyrocketing. And that's why people's taxes are hard. And that's caused a lot of people to be mad. It's like, I don't know how to address that.
We're, we're in a huge building boom right now. I mean, with the apartments coming in, that's going to increase the population by ten percent once those are filled, over, yeah.
I know.
So all these new people are going to expect more services. You know, traffic is going to increase, so does that mean, what does that mean? Does that mean we need another police officer or two? What does that mean? What is, you know, are they, are they then going to say, hey, you know, we need whatever? We need new stoplights, lights everywhere, and we need this and we need that?
Yeah, I know.
All of that stuff is, is coming.
That's one of the difficult things for us, that we could not build another business, not build another house, and all that effect is still going to happen with what's going on around this. And that's, that's tough.
It absolutely is.
I think we have at least one member that is ready to go, and, uh, I don't know if we're, we've covered everything, except perhaps the last one, which I think we've talked about throughout.
Good morning. What's one?
Town Administrator.
Yeah, that's kind of been permeating the whole discussion.
Do we, do we feel like this has been?
We, we've had informal Department Heads meetings the last two years, three years almost, that we get together once a month usually and, you know, just have coffee, go around the table. What, what are you up to? And, and just share that information. And once in a while, we'll have a, somebody come in and wants to present something or, you know, a new IT thing or something like that. But, uh, so we're, we're already doing that, and again, I think it's been useful because, you know, we don't always get to see each other every day, but we get an idea of what each department's doing, whether it's, whether the cemetery department needs some help, or, or the library, or whoever, they, you know, we get them to, to, to share their information.
Another example of, of having the pieces in place with the communication issue being because at those meetings that you have monthly, does the word hit back to the board? That, hey, this is what we're talking about, this is what we're thinking, this is.
No, and that's kind of, that's one of our problems.
Because with a TA, that, if he's involved or she's involved in those meetings, in his report or her report to the board, and your monthly reports to the board, those issues can then be related to the, to the, it's like.
We did it as a start to better the communication from the Department Heads to begin with. So now, it's time to morph as we get to Town Manager, things like that, but at least we got together today and, and we can move forward, and maybe, well, with the Selectmen, what's matched items is that.
And as things come up, you know, we want to hear about them, and perhaps we do have another one of these type of meetings.
Yeah, we're, a couple more things I'd like to say. One is, I spent about fifteen years of my life, I have been involved in the nonprofit sector for twenty-five years of my life, but I spent about fifteen of those doing consulting for boards and small nonprofits that hired their first executive director, executive staff person. And the, the situation the town finds itself in reminds me a lot of a small nonprofit where the board and a handful of non-executive staff that report to the board have done everything for a long time. Like, they've been the volunteers and the hand staff doing all the work. And they've grown, and all of a sudden, they're like, oh my God, we're losing our minds. And it's because they've grown to a point where they, the need for that executive position is screening out. And they don't necessarily know that, because there's no one to teach people that, right? This feels exactly to me like that. And it, and it's not, but this isn't like the coming of the Messiah, we don't think that, right? It's not, that person coming in is not going to fix everything, but it will create a different structural situation where a lot of things will get easier.
And it's just growing pains.
Yeah, well, that, that's the short word. Yeah, it's the same thing. And at a certain point, you need to change the structure.
I've seen this, you know, in the school district, I've seen, now I've seen it here, you know.
And it's, it's one of those things, and I think a lot of the longstanding governors that are on the boards and committees have been in town their entire life, and they want to benefit the town by being on these boards and committees, but seeing the town grow as fast as it's growing right now, and that's on all fronts, I think is concerning them because they're like, how do we, as a volunteer board, control such a large piece of things going on?
You have to look at, you know, what the needs are because we're growing.
Right.
And, and keep in mind that the taxpayers are concerned about how much taxes they're paying.
Oh, yeah.
So, I mean, you have to try to balance it.
The taxpayers have also got to remember that when you're kind of giving a conversation about need, 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 want, 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 that there's the other handle here that's how to pay for it.
Right, exactly.
People don't, don't always want to connect those two.
And as I've said several times, I live and work in a community where that want, 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 and that payout, it didn't matter, they paid it out because the people had the means. And they didn't care what it cost, they wanted it for today. And that population's moving west. So we need to be aware of it, because we're gonna have
The same thing I want to say, this hasn't come up, something that's hard, it's hard to raise, but I just wanna, I'm not in a position where it can rain crap on my head too badly, so I'm gonna raise it. There is, there is noticeable acrimony on the select board. And I'm not gonna get into why or who or whatever. But I, I hear about it, I see it on the videos of the meetings. And it, please know that that acrimony has effects. It flows out into the lives of the department heads and everything else.
To everyone.
It, yeah, it flows, it flows out and it's not, it's not good for them. It's not good for the running of the town. And I have no magic answer for it, other than to say, please, I'm just asking you to do your best to manage that to the best of your ability.
If I do, you just chime in.
Mary, I'm not talking to you.
No, no, no. No, I've asked Marty to be able to say something a couple of times now. That is, that has been an enormous problem for me, item number three on your agenda, that with changes of the person, of the select board, with changing bosses, they send out changing vibes throughout the whole town. And it's constantly changing, it's the nature of the beast. A TA is gonna provide some stability, hopefully, in messaging with three-year contracts.
Well, I'm just gonna warn you, and I think he said it best, you know, this is the coming of the Messiah. Don't expect a TA to come in and change everything. Because that TA is still gonna report to that three-member board.
But there's a lot of dates to the basket.
Mary, will you please shut up? Jesus Christ.
What were you saying about acrimony?
Yeah, I know, that's true, I just, I just
My point is simply that, that just because you get a TA, don't expect everything, all the issues to go away. That person's gonna be here, it's gonna be, you know, a set of ears and eyes to, to help you, but he's still gonna report to a three-member board. And, and the wishes of that board or what that person is gonna be doing.
Mary, I'm sorry, I shouldn't have said that. This is not the best time of day for me, but whether it's your, I shouldn't have said that. But I do just want to ask the members of the board to do the best that you can for each of yourselves and find what you can to, you know, function as best as you can. Because it, I know it's hard for you, but it, be aware of this, it affects working people, and I hear about it. And because I don't report to you, I can say that more easily. And I like all of you, okay? This is not me trying to be like, I just feel like it wasn't mentioned, but I think it's important.
We're, we're all elected, we're, we all have our constituents, and it is what it is. And we will work our best, do our best to work together. But I also encourage you and, and other peeps of the town that you come as, I don't mean to sound like you, but you have to come to us. We can't hear so-and-so said, so-and-so said, because I was at the dump, so-and-so said. You know what? No one wants to be that front person, no one wants to come up and be like, Dave, we gotta talk. You know, but if you don't, because I want to ride along to the dump. And I gotta ride along with you. But unless you bring specific stuff to us, nothing's going to change. It's like at work, the copier's broken when it's really out of paper. So, you know, that's our challenge back to you, and that's our challenge back to us. If you see something, you have to say something, you have to come back with specifics, you have to come back with ideas. Just don't toss something out there that we know that we're not getting along. Because you know what? We're three extremely intelligent women, and we know the issues that exist. But, you know, the more that we have input from you, then the better we're gonna be to each other and to all of you and to everybody on that camera and to the entire town.
Well, thank you all for coming, I really appreciate that. I think this was somewhat productive. I think now at least the board knows some of the issues that you're facing. And I think you know some of the issues they're facing. They need to be reelected all the time. You know, I, I again applaud the department heads for wanting to get in front of all of the stuff that's happening here. Wish you well.
Thanks, Marty.
Thank you very much. Our strength is in our people.
That's right.
And we got good people, everybody's, everybody's well intentioned, we got some of the best employees here. So we just, we just want to make it better.
Manolo wants to claim they're pretty good.
Lisa and Peg, please let me know if there's
Local business?
Well, I mean, I'll put something on the agenda for Monday to talk about some of these things, but if you have specifics, let me know. Okay.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas. Happy New Year.
We're done.
Did you vote to adjourn?
Oh, yeah, vote, vote, vote.
Make a motion to adjourn.
There you go, one in favor? Aye, aye, say aye. Aye, there you go.